All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. It's good to see everyone here today. It is 1:00 PM on this 11th day of July of 2023. The City of Lubbock, Texas, we are here for a city council meeting. At this time, city council will convene in chambers to move into executive session, and city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code, and commercial or financial information as it relates to the economic development under Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. We intend to go in for recess to executive session. We will come back out at 1:45, or begin again at 1:45, for a special open session, ceremonial items where we are recognizing the Mandela Washington Fellows again this year. We'll be recognizing them as honorary citizens. It'll be a good time. That should last about 15 to 20 minutes, and then we will promptly begin our regular agenda. At this time, we are on recess. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. It is 1:46, and city council is reconvening in open session, and we have a wonderful group with us today as we are welcoming with the special recognition of the Mandela Washington Fellows, and they are here once again. We're so excited to have you here today to receive their honorary citizenships. So here's the plan. I'm going to step down to the podium. I'm going to call Michael with the Texas Tech... Texas Tech. Michael will tell us who he's with. We'll call him up, and then we're going to have every one of you come up and receive your honorary citizenship recognition, and then we're going to call council down, and we're going to all take a picture together. Sound good?
Yeah.
And as soon as we're done with that, then we'll move into our regular agenda. If you're here for that, we should expect to start here shortly. All right. Michael? Okay, wait. Michael is with the Texas Tech University International...
Affairs.
Good, got it. Michael's with the Texas Tech Office of International Affairs.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick things about these amazing fellows that sit in front of me. The fellowship is a six-week-long intensive, they will agree, intensive leadership institute. It is sponsored by the Department of State since its inception in 2014. There've been about 5,800 fellows since 2014. 700 come to the United States each year for six weeks. They're hosted at 28 institutes around the country. We're in the company of Rutgers, UC Davis, Notre Dame, Northwestern, and that other university in Texas that we won't really give a call out to. The fellows themselves are impressive. They're aged 25 to 35 years old. They're already leaders in their fields. They're lawyers, doctors, they're healthcare professionals, they have started businesses, NGOs, they hold public office, they're financiers. They're absolutely amazing. They make you want to get up earlier in the morning just so that you can get more done. The Mandela Washington Fellowship actually has a lower acceptance rate than the U.S. Ivy League, so it's actually easier to get into Harvard than it is to get into this program. So that kind of tells you the caliber of these fellows. They do accommodation of leaderships, training, academic sessions, they do cultural visits. We've taken them up to Texas at Paladuro, and you have to say it that way because it's all caps with an exclamation point. They do focus projects with coaches while they're here, and I see some of the coaches in the audience. They do site visits, they do community service. Yesterday, we spent all day at the South Plains Food Bank Grub Farm and the food bank itself, and they created meals for, I think they said, 324 families yesterday. So that's just a little of what they do. In addition, the fellowship itself has contributed something like $1.5 million in State Department funds to the state of Texas, as well as almost $800,000 more in cost match. So this is an amazing program. They're amazing fellows. They humble me. They learn a lot from us. We learn a lot from them, and I'm just really, really proud to be part of an amazing team that helps host them for six weeks. So, thank you.
All right, we're going to call you up. Michael's going to hand this to you along with the pen, and then as soon as we're done, we'll get you all back up here, and then we'll do photos, and we'll have some time to take some pictures with everyone. Is that all right? All right. That's what I'm going to have you do. Abdul. Aquaisi.
That was a nice round of applause.
Additionally, Aquaisi, just while he's been here, welcomed his second child. Ali. Teofiel. Butu. Emmanuel. Fofi. Geraldine.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You give me something, I give you something.
You give me something, I give you something.
Last but certainly not least, Zelli.
Again, we're going to have everyone come up, but let me just say this: on behalf of the city council and the City of Lubbock, welcome to our new citizens. Y'all come on up. Hey, fellows. Guns up?
Yeah, that's right. Wreck 'em.
You are going to all come back here. Just come back here. We'll have to get Mark in the back. Let us all come back here. If you're a little taller, you might get to the back for us. Mark McBrayer. I'm under the back. Let's get everybody around the post. Everybody kind of hug around the post. We can put a few people in front of it.
Get close. Make sure you're not covered in my coat.
All right. Everybody kind of come in, squeeze in a little more.
Act like you like each other.
Everybody have your citizenship. All right, everybody, let's move in. Everybody move in. If you're not seeing the camera, stand on your tippy toes. All right, Ms. Julie, come on in the corners. All right, everybody in.
Three, two, one.
All right, good job, team.
Ladies, this way. Come on, ladies, get in.
Do you have any more from Zimbabwe?
Zimbabwe, no. We have Botswana, Rwanda.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Again, we're going to have everyone come up, but let me just say this: on behalf of the city council and the City of Lubbock, welcome to our new citizens. Y'all come on up. Hey, fellows. Guns up?
Yeah, that's right. Wreck 'em.
You are going to all come back here. Just come back here. We'll have to get Mark in the back. Let us all come back here. If you're a little taller, you might get to the back for us. Mark McBrayer. I'm under the back. Let's get everybody around the post. Everybody kind of hug around the post. We can put a few people in front of it.
Get close.
Yeah, make sure you're not covered in my coat.
All right. Everybody kind of come in, squeeze in a little more.
Act like you like each other.
Everybody have your citizenship. All right, everybody, let's move in. Everybody move in. If you're not seeing the camera, stand on your tippy toes. All right, Ms. Julie, come on in the corners. All right, everybody in.
Three, two, one.
All right, good job, team.
Ladies, this way. Come on, ladies, get in.
Do you have any more from Zimbabwe?
Zimbabwe, no. We have Botswana, Rwanda.
Oh, well.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
We will first begin with our ceremonial items. We will start off with our invocation, and as we move into the invocation, we will ask you all to stand and remain standing, and as the prayer is completed, we will move into our pledges with Ms. Mayor Protem Patterson Harris. And at this time today, we're honored to have Colin Lundstrom. He's the Deacon of Worship and Administration with the Fellowship Church of Lubbock. Colin, if you'd step forward, and again, if you would take off hats, if you have any hats, and remain standing for the pledges.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we ask today, this afternoon, that your name would be honored in this moment, in this room, and in this meeting today, and that your name would be honored in all our business here in Lubbock, Texas, and that it be honored by our city's leaders: Mr. Payne, Mrs. Harrison, Mrs. Martinez-Garcia, Mr. McBrayer, Mr. Massengill, Dr. Wilson, and Mrs. Joy. Lord, would you remind them of their sacred task today? They are citizens who've been called to rule as statesmen and women in our city, and today we acknowledge before God and man that it is good and right to support our magistrates in their capacity and their office to, their stewardship, to protect persons' liberty and property of those who reside within this city. It's a sacred duty, and it is defined as such because it's found in your scripture, and it proceeds from you as our God, and so to that honorable end. And for the business that is at hand today, we would humbly ask that you would stir deep within their hearts a love for the citizens of Lubbock, grant them a very specific love for very specific people who are rooted in this specific place as they fulfill a calling to be persuasive stewards of the public authority you have entrusted to them. May they govern today in the service of truth and what is truly good for those that they govern, and we ask that you'd grant them a desire to be model citizens themselves and honorable leaders by which we may cheerfully follow. May they not find their moral standards within any sort of political order itself, but rather that they would seek to elevate and even reform that order for the better, that you'd guard them from folly, guard them from ill-advised decisions, guard them from ill-gotten gain, and Lord may they be principled in their conduct, they would be truth-driven in their motivations, that they be prudent in their ambitions. I ask, Lord, that you would grant them measured and yet hopeful expectations concerning their rule to govern in this city until you return, and so, Lord, help us to be reminded today that really to you alone belongs our land, our homes, our labors, our city, and make us willing, Lord, to submit ourselves to you ultimately. We humble ourselves under your mighty hand, and we ask for your help today. Amen.
Would you please remain standing and join us as we say the flag to the American and Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Lundstrom, very much for that, and thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, we will now move to item three, which is our citizen comments, and we have one comment today, that's Mr. Steve Vernon. He is going to be speaking on Agenda Item 6.8. Mr. Vernon, just for your... Mr. Vernon, are you here? All right, Mr. Vernon, this is not a public hearing. You can step forward and make your comments. You have three minutes to make those comments, and Mr. Jimmy will give you a 30 seconds. If you need more time, he'll give you notice, and it'll be completed at three minutes, okay?
No comments, just if you have any questions.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, then we will move to Agenda Item four, which is our minutes, under 4.1. May 16th, June 9th, June 13th, and June 15th, special ribbon cutting. I'd ask for a motion to approve 4.1.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Motion carries 7-0. We will now next move to our consent agenda. This is Items 5.1 through 5.21. As we had no pulls this week, I would ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda 5.1 through 5.21. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of 5.1 through 5.21 inclusive, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, consent agenda carries 7 to 0. We will now move to our regular agenda. We first have up item 6.1. 6.1 is going to be a public hearing. We want to take no action on 6.1, but that carries us to 6.2, which would be the resolution that we will vote on. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown to discuss 6.1 and 6.2, and then I will open up our public hearing. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nice to be with you this afternoon. Item 6.1 is an application for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, TDAHCA, for the non-competitive 4% housing tax credit. We had one of these, if you'll recall, at your last council meeting. We discussed the Ella apartments. Today, you will be considering a resolution of no objection for South Plains Apartments and Homestead Apartments. That'll be in one resolution. As we talked about last week, earlier in the year, we considered the 9% competitive applications. We received four of those this year. That is a competitive process, and so you do have the opportunity to show preference to one of those projects or another, or just to have no obligation for any of those. The 4% is not competitive, so all you have to do is pass a resolution of no objection for them to continue to move forward. The other difference between these two projects is the 4% housing tax credit program does couple with the multifamily bond program in this particular case that's being facilitated through the Lubbock Housing Finance Corporation. You all did approve for them to issue bonds for this project at your meeting on the 27th as well. Some specifics about the project itself. As I mentioned, this application is for both the South Plains Apartments at 1102 58th Street and Homestead Apartments at 5401 56th Street. These are both rehabilitation projects. The developer anticipates investing about $35,000 per unit in renovations, and that does include converting, I believe it's 12 or 13 of their units to ADA compliant units. They do not have those available at this time. My understanding is that they will be primarily cosmetic renovations, some HVAC and things like that, and then also the creation of a tenant support program for tenants living in both of the apartments. Ms. Sherry Flynn with Lubbock Housing Finance Corporation is with us again today if you have specific questions about the developers or the projects themselves. But as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we do need to have a public hearing prior to your consideration of the resolution of no objection. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. McBrayer has some questions at this time.
The address was up there incorrect. The 1102, that was the Ella from last time, wasn't it? Correct address is 5520 58.
You are correct. Let me get that for you.
Well, their sign says 5520. I figured they know where they are.
Yeah, and I believe that...
Oh, perfect. Thank you. It's just me that doesn't know where they are. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Patterson Harris, you have a question for Ms. Brown?
If I need to wait and ask in this question following the hearing, that's fine. I just didn't completely understand what a tenant support program consisted of.
Yes. So they are, from what I understand, these will be sort of like opportunities for classes for the tenants, so if they need help with the rental assistance programs, I believe there's some family component. I don't know if it's so far as a daycare, but some support care for families that are living there and that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right track, and I think it's a great idea. I think they should talk about that.
I think they may have some like arts kind of classes or offerings and things like that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Thank you for that clarification and good catch, Mr. Lawyer McBrayer. All right, let's go ahead and, Miss, may I stay close, Ms. Brown? Let's go ahead and open up our public hearing as to 6.1. The Texas Local Government Code requires a public hearing be conducted in regard to this proposed 4% non-competitive housing tax credit. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to council in regard to this proposed matter, you may step forward at this time. All right. The public hearing is now closed. So now, having had the public hearing, we will now move to the resolution for Item 6.2. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.2? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Is there a second?
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Are there any further discussion or questions of Ms. Brown on 6.2? Ms. Joy.
I don't know, Ms. Brown, if you've got the email from Ms. Flynn. Some of us got that email as a result of the last council meeting where there were a lot of questions about ownership and who was managing those properties. After the information that she gave you in this email, are you satisfied that the management is going to do what they said, and they're going to do it in a timely fashion?
As far as I know, yes. It may be good to invite Ms. Flynn up just if she has any additional comments. She is with us today. But yes, it sounds like this is a different situation than the one we discussed at your last council meeting. The majority of the complaints that we are aware of are repair complaints from tenants, more on the smaller scale, just wanting some things done inside their units. Do you want to add anything?
That's correct, and something that I did mention in the memo also was that, you know, this is part of a bond transaction, and so there are lots of legal documents and legal requirements and so forth, representations and so forth, that if they do not follow up and meet those requirements, then the trustee could call the bonds do payable, call the loan do payable, could actually take over the project itself. So that's the case in any kind of a bond. So that's the case in any kind of a bond slash tax credit development. And so we feel pretty good about these folks. We did some research after the last meeting and did not find very many issues at all, either in Lubbock with their developments or elsewhere. And so we feel like this is going to go much, very smoothly.
Well, one statement that was in this email says that this group had been asked to manage 7,000 apartment units in eight states that were owned by Global Ministries Foundation. In other words, that's in addition to all of these that you're talking about.
Now, that's on the previous development that you discussed two weeks ago for the Ella.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just want to be sure they haven't overloaded their—
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. And I do think that's what happened with the organization two weeks ago, is they were just overwhelmed based on HUD's request to manage, own and manage 7,000 additional units, which is why it took them so long to get around to doing the transaction on the Ella. But this South Plains Homestead, different developers, different situation.
Yeah, I want to be sure that this goes smoothly and quickly.
We do too. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Martine?
Thank you, Ms. Flynn, for taking the time to do that extra legwork and—to do the homework. I think it's important for us to always be looking out for that type of stuff whenever we're dealing with dollars and more so with citizens.
Absolutely.
We want them to have the best quality living as possible. So I hope in the future, from here and moving forward, that that's always part of the consideration.
Yes, ma'am. It will be from now on.
Thank you for your service on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other questions, comments, discussion, further discussion on 6.2? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, 6.2 carries seven to zero. We are now moving to 6.3, and again, I think, Ms. Brown, you're up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, item 6.3 is consideration of contract 17451. This is a tri-party agreement between Plant AS or Agricultural Systems, the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and the City of Lubbock. I believe many of you were able to attend the press conference announcing Plant Agricultural Systems and their entrance into the Lubbock market last week as a part of LIDA's press conference. And we are, this is a little bit unusual for how LIDA's performance agreements typically work. That's typically something that stays between a company and the Economic Development Alliance, but the city is actually participating in this agreement, and so that is why we are bringing it to you as a tri-party agreement today. A little bit about Plant AS. They are an infrastructure service provider of physical and digital infrastructure for the food industry. And so their physical infrastructure here in the City of Lubbock will be up to 13 greenhouse facilities, where they will be sustainably growing produce. We anticipate leafy greens and tomatoes, but they could expand their offering as they establish roots here, no pun intended. They are also in the process of developing a data platform that provides additional information about the food that we eat. So the easiest way to think about this is when you go to get your tomato at the grocery store, it may now have a QR code on it that you could scan with your cellphone to find out all of the information and more that you ever wanted to know about that tomato. So the fact that it was grown here in Lubbock, Texas, if any products were used in the growing process, what those products were, when the tomato was harvested, how it got to your supermarket, and when, how long it's been sitting there before you pick it up and take it home. So it's really exciting technology, and that's kind of a secondary part to the investment that they're making here in Lubbock. They plan to invest $674 million in, like I said, 13 greenhouse facilities. They will be creating up to 986 jobs with an average salary of $48,000. So this slide shows you the public investment that is a part of this performance agreement. The property that you see highlighted in the red or maroon color on the map, those are comprised of two properties that LIDA will be deeding over to Plant. This is known as the Roberts Family Trust property located between 4th Street and Erskine, near Gerald Avenue. Easiest way to think about this is it's pretty directly northeast of where La Prino is building their new facility. Second property is the Carlton North property, which is located just north of the Roberts Family Trust property. And so those two properties total just under 700 acres that will be deeded over to the company. LIDA will also be assisting Plant with the annexation process. It's currently located outside the city limits but adjacent to the city limits, and then also with easements for utility purposes. They will also be extending infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure to the site. And we have several from the LIDA team here today, and so if you want additional information on their incentives, I'm sure they would be happy to answer those questions for you. The City of Lubbock will be providing up to 600,000 gallons of water per day to Plant's infrastructure. And we do require, just want to make a note for the public purpose, that we will require that they be annexed into the city limits before we are able to fulfill our part of this agreement. That's all I have. Happy to answer any additional questions if you have them, or also happy to pass it over to the team from LIDA.
Any question of Ms. Brown? All right, is there a motion to approve agenda item 6.3? Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there any further discussion on the Skynet Plant Green Leafy Project? Ms. Joy.
My question is for Mr. Atkinson. 600,000 gallons of water. In that agreement, does it have any termination terms in it? In other words, let's assume we got short of water here in Lubbock. Can we terminate that agreement?
Don't believe the agreement itself would terminate. There's force majeure language that allows us to address whatever the issue is, and we also reserve that right with any customer of the system.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions of Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Brown, or the team? All right. Motion and a second on 6.3. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, I'll now move to 6.4, and I will turn it over to you at this time, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item 6.4 may look familiar. It is continuing the process that you recently followed with X Fab and their new investment in the community. The item before you today, this is the next-to-last step in the similar process now for Duraline LLC. Of course, Duraline is an approved project to locate in your Lubbock Business Park. It is a great opportunity for us. They are high-tech industry focused on fiber optics. Particular item or the action requested today is to consider a resolution that would approve a notice of intent that you will now consider entering into and executing a tax abatement. You are not granting a tax abatement today, but rather approving the notice of intent.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions on 6.4? Again, we're not approving, we're just moving forward in the process. All right, is there a motion to approve 6.4? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of 6.4? I'm sorry, Ms. Patterson-Harris, I got ahead of myself.
We are not voting on the tax abatement here today. Is there any way to provide any insight, or do we have to wait on that later as to what that proposed tax abatement looks like?
Excellent question. I can probably only answer half of it at the moment, but we'd be glad to get you the rest of the information. First, quick reminder to council, you do have to have a project that comes forward with a minimum of a $1 million investment in real property or real property improvements. The Duraline project is $22 million in real property improvements and an additional $32.5 million that would be added through new machinery and equipment that would be located within and taxable. This is largely going in an existing facility. The existing facility is known as one of our spec buildings. Those buildings are already on the tax rolls, so the base value for this one, in terms of looking at it in dollars and cents for the city, the base value is better because that is already in there. So that portion would not be abated. The eligible portion will be that part of the roughly $52.5 million new that gets put into it, factored into the assessed value in the tax rate, and we will do that math and get the answer to you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Joy.
There's a declining percentage on that tax abatement.
I believe it is a five-year declining.
That's right.
Yes.
Which is the same as council considered for X Fab.
And it's roughly a $775,000 impact over the five-year term.
Total. All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris, any other discussion on 6.4? Does anyone have any other questions of Ms. Brown or Mr. Atkinson?
I don't have any questions.
Other than you broke your bracelet?
I don't do it.
All right. All in favor of approval of 6.4, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, 6.4 carries seven to zero. We are now moving 6.5, 6.6, and 6.7, council. These are second readings. 6.5, 6, and 7, second readings. I guess I'll begin with 6.5 and ask for a motion to approve 6.5. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion or questions on 6.5? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 6.5 carries seven to zero. And then to 6.6, I want to entertain a motion on 6.6. Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Are there any discussion or questions of staff regarding 6.6? Ms. Joy.
When it was on first reading, no one appeared for McDougal Realtors. However, there was a representative in the audience who did not speak. I think I had questions and some others had questions, considering that building, kind of what was going to go on with it, and it was pretty indefinite from what was provided. We also had a letter from McDougal Realtors that was not signed, which I think is a little unusual. So once again, if you're present or you're case, at least get up, introduce yourself, and say, if you have any questions, let me know. And I see Charles Bolton out here when we get to—are you on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. On 6.6?
Yes.
Okay, well, come on up, Mr. Bolton. You getting around better?
A little bit.
Little bit?
Yes. Actually, my name is Charles Bolton, Bolton Oil Company, 730476. And we purchased this property, and we actually will put oil change there. Here's what we're interested in doing.
Hold on, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Joy, do you have specific questions on 6.6 of Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Okay.
What are they planning to do?
We will replace the building with an oil change facility.
So you're going to demolish the building?
We'll remove the building. We will not remove all the trees. We're going to keep the trees that we can, because it's a nice look right there.
Okay. Well, I think it was hard to tell from what was presented to us in writing from McDougal Realtors what actually was going to happen, and so with no one appearing, we, again, we just didn't—I wasn't real comfortable with it.
I understand, and the reason it was in McDougal's, it was because at the point in time that they filed, the property belonged to someone else, did not belong to us. So that's why—
You now own the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of staff on 6.6? I think, did this carry 6.1 last time? Yeah. So all in favor of approval of 6.6, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion now carries seven to zero. All right, we'll now move to 6.7. I'd entertain a motion on 6.7 to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Are there any questions or questions of staff on 6.7? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.7, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 6.7 also carries seven to zero. Our council will now move to 6.8. If you recall, I believe Mr. Vernon also said he was here. We did have the public hearing. That portion is complete. There were some questions. I think a few of us had questions as far as total capacity for that property, if I recall. Ms. Sager, I think there were two or three questions on that?
Yes, and so the applicant provided a foreplan of the building, which Building Safety used to calculate the occupant load. It's dependent on what the space will be used for. So we calculated it at a couple of different uses. So the space all total that will be used for the event center is just under 1,500 square feet. So if that entire space is filled with tables and chairs, like a dining room in a restaurant, it'll have a 98-person occupant load. If we take half of that space and leave it open for any other activity, dancing or anything else, it bumps it up to 148 occupant load.
So as far as parking, talk to me.
So the parking ratio is based on the use itself, not the occupant load, and it'll be one space per 50 square feet. I think I calculated it at about 29 spaces, because it's 1,470 square feet.
Okay.
Ms. Joy.
So, Mr. Vernon told us last time that he used part of the building for an event center, but he also used part of the building to wrap vehicles.
Correct.
Is he asking for a specific use for the entire property?
The specific use will be applied to the entire property, yes.
If that's the case, he wouldn't be allowed to use it for wrapping vehicles, is that right?
He can continue wrapping it for the vehicles, because the specific use is in addition to all of the permitted uses in the base district.
Okay, that's—I was worried about that. The other thing, and this information came from the fire chief, is that the occupancy is determined by the fire marshal after everything is done to the building. Is that your understanding?
The fire marshal absolutely has a part in it. Building Safety and the Fire Marshal's office work together on the occupant load, so the numbers I have are only from Building Safety. I have not discussed them with the fire marshal.
Okay, but in terms of, when we're talking to Mr. Vernon, he needs to know that that ultimate decision about how many people can be in that facility when it's completed for an event center, it will be determined by the fire marshal, not by you guys.
Not by my department, but Building Safety and the fire marshal together, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
A question. Would you kind of shout out, well, not real loud, just kind of low-shout, shout out some of the uses, even though, I mean, they're asking for that specific use, what are some of the actual uses for that location?
That are allowed in the C2 district. And so fortunately, the base zoning of C2 is already in place. That is not changing. We're just adding the one specific use. But C2 would allow a grocery store, a gym, a smoke shop, a restaurant, a lot of retail sales.
Okay, because if they didn't do this, he could always go back and sell some—
Under the current zoning, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager? All right. Is there a motion to approve 6.8? Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion on 6.8? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.8, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. And with that, it is 2:35 on July 11th, and City Council adjourned.